And again.
Right on that.
And then the highest is again. The vehicle code sections. So just and then at the end, I did want to sort of show you. I know I'm out of time already. Here's the total complaints received from Blue Lake from 2018 to 2021. And then there they are by showing you by severity. So the blue is the felony conduct. That's the smallest. Primarily what we see are a lot of misdemeanors out of Blue Lake. And again, the vast majority are vehicle code type cases.
Maggie, can you explain what what those misdemeanors might entail? It sounds like a misdemeanor, sounds like a pretty minor infraction, but it can also be theft. Vehicle, you know burglaries and things. Can you kind of talk a little bit about that?
Certainly. So and and the main point I would like to make is we only see cases where a suspect has been identified. So it's important to sort of understand that because what you may be aware of as far as your crime rates may be a little bit different than what I actually see in the DA's office. Because we see them after suspects have been identified, law enforcement believes there's sufficient evidence that we can prove the case occurred and that the suspect's responsible. So absolutely misdemeanors in the examples, the cases that we're seeing are mostly vehicle code violations. So it's people driving without a license. Or driving on a suspended license. There are a few driving under the influence, which are obviously the more significant misdemeanors. And then we do have some domestic violence that can be a misdemeanor conduct. We had some trespassing. We had. Those are the sort of the bulk. We do have some burglar type cases where law enforcement made contact with someone and they were in possession of burglar tools. So that's always a suspicious sort of conduct, you know, when they stop someone late at night and the person's, you know, peeking into cars. And in fact, they have tools on them that would allow them to do a break in or to try to steal the car. But that's the significant type of misdemeanors that we were seeing.
Do you do the same thing for the other categories, particularly the felonies? Is there so few of them? What type they are?
Yes. So the type they are is going back to 2018, we had five felonies. They were felons with firearms. There were also a number of high speed chases where law enforcement's attempting to stop a car and someone takes off creating pretty significant public safety risks. We also had a criminal threats case in 2019. It was similar as far as. We had felon with a firearm. We had. Domestic violence. We had criminal threats. And then 2020, we saw more domestic violence. We saw felon with a firearm. We also saw. Some drug dealing. So that's what elevates it to a felony. Straight possession when someone is detained by law enforcement and they have a small quantity of either methamphetamine or heroin or cocaine on them. That's a misdemeanor. But if the quantity and their behavior indicates that they possess for sales or that they're transporting it for purposes of distribution, then it becomes a felony. We had a couple of those in 2020 out of Blue Lake. And then in 2021, we saw someone who had. Methamphetamine as well as a gun, which makes it a felony. We had assault with a deadly weapon. We had some domestic violence and we had auto theft. So in 2021, there were actually 11 felonies referred to my office. From the Blue Lake area.
All right. Well, thank you. So we're going to move on to public comments. I'm going to keep everybody to three minutes. If you can, you'll have a chance to for a rebuttal. But before. When you when you're ready to speak, please raise your hand and wait for the moderator to call any before you speak. If you can keep your microphones off until it's your turn. And also keep your comments respectful, please, or we'll have to move on. So. Let's move right on into public comment. So first person to raise their hand.
Jeffrey Robinson.
Oh, Jeffrey.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I've been especially concerned, especially since those. Two men were found apparently killed on the river bar. I love the river bar. I used to go there every morning at dawn for years. And I had to stop because. I don't feel it's safe anymore, but. More than that. I'm particularly concerned for the folks who are. Living outdoors, either at Henshaw's or other places. I actually don't know where most people live, but I have a good friend who's. Clean and sober for years, just like good person who's living in the river bar and I fear for his life. I guess what I want to say is without very much of a police presence here. It seems like. Reporting on suspicious activity can feel like itself is the liability. If somebody. Figures out that you're talking about them, you know, somebody figures out that. You called the police on them, then they have every opportunity. To take retribution. Okay.
All right. So Sheriff, would you like to respond on that?
Yes, thank you. I I too am concerned, Ms. Robinson, and people that are concerned about these two homicides. And it is disturbing. And and yeah, it's there are similarities between the two homicides. And we are actively investigating those two cases. And, you know, we're there's some forensic evidence that we have to review and to make sure that. You know, we're doing everything possible to try and get prosecutable case, but it is still disturbing. Absolutely. And. And so we're guarding reporting suspicious activity. Okay, you can report suspicious activity and remain anonymous. That is something that you can do anytime. You can report it by if you see a crime in progress, you can call 911. And even though your number does come up on our screen, you can say that you're going to remain anonymous. And this is what you're seeing right here, right now, and we're going to be able to act on that. And so I encourage you to do that. If you know about something that's suspicious, if you know about things relating to this homicide. Call us and and leave a number or a name or anything else that you think would be worthy of putting into as far as this investigation goes. You can also leave a tip online. We have online reporting and you can leave a tip there. So it's very, very important that you do. You know, provide us information because that's the only way that we're going to break these cases wide open as far as people to come and to provide us information. So we can act on it and actively solve these cases.
Thank you.
Lynn Glenn.
Oh, Lynn Glenn, you're up next.
Hi. So Jason, I don't see the agenda. I'm so I'm not sure. Is this the time for off agenda items for public comments? I'm not sure what's on the agenda for a public meeting. So.
Then the same is having problems getting the agenda posted. So I never got up, but we have one agenda item that is just a public comment pretty much. So.
So any any item which needs to be discussed now could be discussed now and during public comment? Is that how it's working?
It is the town hall. So ask your questions now.
Okay, well, I have, I think, a similar. Maybe question or comment to Mr. Robinson. So I also have been walking the levee for almost 50 years by myself usually. And I've also been concerned about the bodies that have been found. On on the levee. And there's not really a lot of information about. For the public, I think, about the circumstances to be able to judge, well, am I safe? Am I not safe? I think I saw a press release from Sheriff Department. Sheriff Hansel, and I think he said be cautious and maybe take some self-defense classes. And it was just, it was a little unclear because. So for me, it's just very practical. Should I be walking on the levee by myself? Should I not go down towards the end by the gate? Should I? I mean, I don't know. I don't because I don't know really exactly where the bodies were found or if that even matters. But it's for me, it's a question. I don't have children who ride bikes around town. Other people do. So I think my question is, what is your assessment of the general risk level to the public when there have been at least two murders in town?
Yes, I mean, right now, what I would encourage, if you want to go for a walk, is is go with a buddy. Use a buddy system is really the best thing you can do right now. Because this really is a whodunit case. Okay, this is something that's, you know, obviously, we. You know, we're acting on some leads that that we're actively following up on. But, you know, we would, you know, that have two murders in this close proximity. The bodies were found about a quarter mile from each other. It is definitely concerning. And and so, you know, we don't know, you know, of course, you know, like specific timelines on that as well. So I can't tell you, you know. You know, walk during these hours or whatnot. There again, there were some similarities between the two. And, you know, we're not, we're not able to provide the detail as far as, you know, how the similarities, you know, of these two cases match up. But I would say that you want to walk during the day. You want to walk with friends or friends. And and just be aware of your surroundings. It is very, very important. And that would be anywhere in Humboldt County right now. I think it's very, very important that. You know that you take that in consideration. Always walk again, well lit, have your cell phone. And if you see something suspicious, walk away. Go back to your vehicle, call us. Let us know what's going on there. Though, you know, we have a big county and a lot of area to cover, we want to hear what's going on there and we want to act upon it. So if you see something suspicious there and people acting bizarre or strange, you know, people approaching you. Because that's something that again, we're going to get our deputies over there and and we're going to, you know, actively try to follow up on it. We've had deputies that have walked that trail in the last weeks. They're trying to frequent patrol checks all over in that area to make sure that, you know, at random, at random times to make that we are flying the flag there and being visible. But again, we can't be everywhere at once. And so you have to take your safety in consideration and do what you can to make sure you protect yourself.
So the the murders are being investigated and you said there's forensic evidence that has to be assessed. What is the timeframe? Do you have a timeframe in your office for having more specific information? And having more conclusion to the investigations?
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have a timeframe because we rely on Department of Justice to do some DNA testing. And, you know, they have a backlog as far as DNA testing goes. And we can only send a few samples at a time. And so it's going to take a little bit of time. We hope, you know, in the in the coming weeks, we're going to have some answers. In reality, you know, there's other cases where they have people in custody that they kind of prioritize before ours. But we're going to do our best. We've already paid for some. Forensic evidence to go to a private party. And so that can be tested because we couldn't wait for DOJ. And so we're analyzing that evidence right now. And and so we're hoping to act upon, you know, something soon. But we can't act until we do have that that evidence that supports, you know, going after a particular suspect.
I mean, there's first time would be Moto G seven. I'm not sure who that is.
Jason, it's Dennis Whitcomb.
Hi, Dennis. Go ahead.
I'd like to ask about the status across the river. In that in those camps that used to be there. Have they been cleared out or are they still active? Because I've heard gunshots in that in that area on my. Walks in it on the levee area.
Go ahead, Sheriff.
Sorry. I do know that we had some patrol around those areas and I know that some camps have been vacated. And so. You know, we're actively looking at that. If you do have an area where you believe there's an active camp. And, you know, there's some criminal activity going on like those gunshots, please let us know. Because that's something definitely we want to follow up on. We'll get there. We'll have. You know, our teams go out there. If it takes a four wheeler to get there, a four wheel drive, you know, we'll we'll get out there as soon as we can to do that investigation. So again, call, you can either go online to humboldtsheriff.org and. And log an anonymous complaint where these homeless camps are, or you can give us a call 445-7251. And let us know and talk to a dispatcher and and we can log that and we'll send them out there.
All right, Dennis, I have been in there in the last few weeks. I spent quite a bit of time trying to find a fire. So I wandered quite a bit out there. I didn't cover everything. So I didn't see a lot. But that's not saying there isn't a few camps out there, but nothing real major, no big, big and camp built. Like there used to be. So it is winter time and a lot of them clear out at the time of the year. So it's hard to say, but.
And Dennis, this is Mandy. I've also been back there. I've I walk it fairly frequently. And most of the camps, the established camps are gone.
Okay, good. That's that's good. Be some mind. Thank you.
The next person up. Are there any other questions? Any hands? Jean? Go ahead, Jean.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Maggie and Billy, Billy. Could you tell us what you consider the Blue Lake area? I know our town is just like a mile by a mile. And some of those figures that you gave us is that. Over towards the Glendale area also, West End. And I have a second question I'd like to ask too. Has is there a increase in heroin use in the area? Now, thank you.
You bet. So one of the sort of unique areas, unique way of trying to pull the stats out for your area is because it's sheriff's office. So it isn't. Like normally, if I say Eureka, it means every case I've received from the Eureka Police Department. So that's why this is a really good question on your part. It's. The addresses I'm seeing include Blue Lake Casino, there the Glendale Road, Glendale Drive area. They go out to rail, obviously Railroad Avenue. But so, yeah, it is a little bit wider than perhaps you would think of just solely in town. But primarily just. That that area. I wouldn't say heroin's gone up in Blue Lake per se. We have seen it gone up in general. But what I've seen statistically from from the numbers we've pulled, I don't see that it's gone up. The sheriff might have some additional information because, as I say, sometimes. They're aware of cases that don't necessarily come to me.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I could, I can I can share my screen and 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 let you know kind of the area that we're talking about here and and some of the crimes that we track. And what we do in a given week. And so. I'll go ahead and do that. So what you're looking at here is a map of Blue Lake. And what we what we have. In our records management system is we have crime mapping. And this this actually is is data that is available to everyone. If you go to our website, humboldtsheriff.org and. And then click on the crime mapping. You can actually zoom down and and drill down to Blue Lake and see what crimes have occurred there in the last 24 hours, three days, seven days. And what we're looking at here is kind of a map of what we've been to over the past week in Blue Lake. And and Blue Lake and the surrounding areas. Obviously, this is goes beyond the city. But typically, this is this is what we see in Blue Lake and which is. You know, unwanted subjects, alarm calls, patrol checks, public assist, 415 noise. Those are the noise complaints. We had one burglary over the course of a week, general disturbance. And mostly we have a. Proactivity. And that's what you saw as far as the arrest data goes. We have a lot of proactive type arrests there with people being pulled over. And and, you know, for DUI, driving while suspended, getting, you know, drugs and illegal weapons, those kind of things. And so. Let me go back here. Let's stop sharing just for a second. And then. Try to get to the stats portion. Okay, get back there. This is a typical stat for Blue Lake over the course of a week. As you see, that this is from the 24th until the 30th. Of October, so just two weeks ago now, I guess. And so we have about four total incidents. You see over in the left hand side of the screen. Call investigations, alarm calls, so forth and so on. Day, you see that generally. A little higher at at night, you know, it's. In around the. And over that course of the week, Tuesday was the highest calls for service or incident. Information. All online. And so this that is is accessible. And and you can get all this data by just going to our website. Drug in the county in general. Fentanyl. We're seeing twice the amount of overdose death and regarding fentanyl. And we're seeing. Being now as far as the here.
I think we lost the sheriff. I think it's connection was a little bit unstable. We'll get him back on.
Just to comment on where what he was talking about, though, is we have, like every other area of California, we're seeing fentanyl. Increase significantly. And sadly, that is related to a higher number of deaths. So. California is watching that number literally double each year. And and it's believed it's linked to fentanyl. So I think that's where he was discussing the one of the the big issues that we're seeing now and that we're trying to address.
Are you back, Sheriff?
I am. I apologize. Bad internet connection.
All right. Is there any hands up?
I have Stephanie and then Lynn.
Okay, Stephanie, your hands up?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for attending this meeting tonight. Great information. I have two questions. One is, how is the sheriff's department leveraging technology? Like drones and remote camera monitoring for current crime prevention? And the second question is, can information obtained by devices like this be used for successful prosecution?
Absolutely. So we're seeing now technology is really necessary to do our our jobs. Yeah, the cameras is. License plate readers on our patrol car. Actually. Active look for. For. And that's something that we're actively looking towards right now. We do have a drone, but that drone is used for evidence purposes right now. We do look at expanding our drone program. And and utilizing it for calls for service, for doing surveillance as well as search and rescue. So that is something that we're actively looking at right now. And and I think technology over the course of the next year or two, you're going to see video cameras. Install in various locations where crime is occurring on a regular basis. And I bring up some of the trailheads. Around Humboldt County where people park their cars and 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 go for a hike. It's a primary location for burglaries to occur. And so look. Cameras bases to try and prevent those from occurring. And so that's the kind of thing that that I think is going to be beneficial throughout our county. We're also going to go to body worn cameras after the first of the year. For the sheriff's office is a thing that's been a long time coming, but it's, but we still have the right cameras and the right system to work within our county.
And as to that other part of the question, absolutely, we use them in prosecution. It's really helpful. It's phenomenal how much they've helped us solve crimes and then also to really clearly show what took place. And for those who don't already have home security systems, you know, sort of the camera in the front of your house, I really encourage you, the price has gone significantly down. The quality is amazing. We've had cases. I had one where a man was literally out of the area having surgery. His phone lit up. He called the sheriff's office and they caught the burglar who was at his house in Humboldt County, even though he was out of the area. So. We see it over and over how effective they are. So really, they're very, very useful.
Great, thank you.
Lynn, Lynn Glenn.
Yeah, I had one more question. So as a former Public Safety Commissioner, I remember when the sheriff's budget for the town was over $300,000. And then this year I see it's down to what 125, something like that. And I really appreciate that because I think in the meetings that this was discussed, it reflects the level of service that the sheriff's department is able to offer. The city of Blue Lake and it reflects reality. So I understand that. And again, as a taxpayer, I really appreciate. Us being paying for what we're able to get. But the concern is that we used to have a lot more. Resources and a lot more law enforcement in town. And we have a lot less now. So on again, I'm wondering, what can we do? What is what is it? What do you recommend? Both of you, Sheriff Hansel and Attorney Fleming, for us to be citizens, perhaps to to deal with that reality.
For sure. That is a big concern. And concerned about the lack of staffing within our county. I think I've been very vocal regarding that. Right now, we're 15 positions down. And we have eight in the academy. Doesn't count those eight. So reality is, you know, we're up around 23 positions that we don't have on the street right now. And so that's why we had to pull back on our coverage and turn it down in Blue Lake. Essentially, you have the same amount of coverage as everywhere a part of the county jurisdiction goes. And so we are a nine one call away. We definitely have. People patrolling that area. These are the people there. Actively patrol. So how can we partner with us to crime? Number one, neighborhood watch. You guys have a great neighborhood watch program. Keep that up. Also, call us. Any suspicious activity, you have to call us and also be witnesses. Stick around. Let us know. A lot of times you get a call about suspicious activity or something like that. And or someone's doing no good and they actually witnessed a crime. We also need them to be a witness on our on our police reports and agree to testify. It's very important that happens. So for successful prosecution. Uh it's very important that happens um so for successful prosecution. Um so. So we need that. But again, call us, um do crime prevention techniques that that are associated with Neighborhood Watch. And just like Maggie said, if you have the ability to get cameras, those ring cameras or video cameras around your house, please do so. It is deterrent. It really is. And also, if there is crime that's captured, we're able to to link some of those crimes back to specific people. And uh and we can do a successful prosecution that way.
And I agree with everything the sheriff said. I really encourage Neighborhood Watch and for neighbors to know. You know, if you're if you're gonna go on vacation and you have neighbors that you can trust, letting them know you're gonna be gone, they keep an eye on your house. The one other area that I've been really impressed by is when people share. Uh that they do in fact have cameras. So when law enforcement arrives and three doors down, there's been an incident. When the person's able to say, I know my neighbor has a camera that faces the street, perhaps we'll be able to see, you know, what the car was that this person came in. Um and that's really been phenomenal. Some some uh areas have even gone to the point of sort of mapping where all the cameras are. And that really helps solving crimes as well as letting people, you know, know who they can go to if they have concerns about. A burglary happened or vandalism happened to the front of their house.
Sheriff, uh I don't believe Blue Lake actually has any active neighborhood watch programs at the moment. We are promoting it as a safety mission. We have been for a while. So if anybody is interested, please contact me or anybody on the safety mission will get you the uh the proper context for that. It is a great program that we. We are we are promoting and we are also promoting the sheriff um sheriff's department camera registry. So if you do have a camera in town. And you have not registered it with the sheriff's department, please get ahold of me and I'll give you the link. It's it's on the sheriff's website. It's pretty easy to do. It just takes a second, put in like three pieces of information. So. And then if there is crime in the area, they they can come and ask you, um hey, I see you have a camera, would you share your footage? So. It is your your option, but um you know. That is one of the things we've been promoting on our our work plan this year. Um Annalee Jones?
Yes, hi. Thank you all for coming, Blue Lakers. As your mayor, I'm very concerned about all of these issues. Um it seemed like we had, my first question has to do but with theft. It seemed like we had. A lot of thefts particularly last summer, and I don't know if those are going down because you've. Gotten the perpetrators or what, but um I'm kind of encouraged that recently we haven't had the thefts that we saw. Last summer. So I was asking, I was wondering about that. And then the second question I had is a citizen just today. Uh button hold me. I'm known to ride my bike around a lot. And I do ride with my husband and that makes me feel a lot safer when I ride on the levy. Um but a citizen did complain to me about um speeders, particularly. On A Street in Blue Lake, especially A and Broad. Um there's a lot of children. That are out on the streets and that kind of thing. And I'm wondering if we could have a little more patrolling um to look for speeders in town. So the theft was my first question and then the speeding cars in Blue Lake.
Yes, there are serial thieves.
Uh he cut out for a minute. Let's see if we can get back.
Can you, sorry. That's the problem with doing this from home, internet connection here. So um. Anyway, so as far as we've had some serial thieves that have really done a lot of thefts here and around Humboldt County, especially northern Humboldt. And so we have caught a few lately, but there's still some out there. And uh so uh we are actively looking for several um and uh. So uh I I wish I wish they all went away, um but just be just do whatever you can and make sure you lock up your vehicles. Don't leave anything in in. In your cars, uh lock your houses and and do those things that um and look out for each other because thefts occur day, night. Weekends, weekdays, uh all the time. So uh so don't be a victim. Um please lock and secure your things. Um as far as the speeders go, absolutely, we're able to uh follow up on that. I'll call the California Highway Patrol and uh as well as our deputy sheriffs and we'll patrol the the area of A Street, you said. And um and so we will look at that and make sure that uh that we have some frequent patrols and also try and get um. Uh so our enforcement over there. So that's that's easy enough.
That that would be great. And I'm gonna tell this citizen because I don't think he knows this idea that this uh. The uh thing that you mentioned earlier about being anonymous, because he has wanted to um. Say something about the particular speeders that he's noticed, but there is neighbors. So I will mention that to him when I see him next that. It can remain anonymous.
For sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have, was it Jeffrey?
Uh I guess a couple of things. Um what I what I just saw happen now is we were talking about a specific neighborhood. And then we were talking about someone wanting to remain anonymous. And I think that their anonymity, the non anonymity may be uh. Less than anonymous right now. But I um I also wanted to speak to this group assembled online here because. I wanna offer to preside. And if there's people who are. Interested in joining me. Especially during the week in the early morning. To go to the river as a group of a safe size. And greet the day with a prayer. For the two men who lost their lives in the river in prayer for a better day. Um, yeah, you'll see uh my name on the screen. I'm a local plumber. Um and I live on Second Avenue between H and I. You'll see my number on the side of my truck. Um I could just say it. It's four nine eight seven seven nine six. Anyone who is interested in joining me, the silent prayer in river. In the early morning, um I'm interested in putting together a group of at least three or four people. For that purpose. Thank you. I might not stay on for very long because it's kind of cool up here and didn't plan properly.
I don't see any more hands. Is there anybody else who'd like to? Oh, Manny, I'm Manny Baker.
Um thanks. Um so I had a question about um. Prosecution of some of our more routine offenders. Um I I know Sheriff Hansel, you had mentioned that we do have some serial thieves in our community. Uh we're all very well aware of who they are. Um and it seemed like for a period of time, our community was somewhat being um terrorized by. By these groups. Uh and I'm just wondering, I know that there have been some tra- changes in the legislation about. Um prosecution of certain types of theft and the level um. That you know, the the benchmarks that had to be met in order to prosecute. Can you talk a little bit about that? Because I feel like our community especially. Um is plagued more by the petty types of uh activity versus the uh more intensive. Uh felonies, even though we have had, you know, these two recent incidents, they're not really reflective of our. Our trends or what we normally see in our community, but we do have a higher level of uh petty theft, um burglary. And there's a level of frustration in the community that the people that are doing it are very well known. We know they're doing it. They've people have even gone and got their stuff back from them themselves and yet nothing seems to be being done except for uh site and release. Can you talk a little bit about like what your position is or um do you have, what are some of your limitations? Or things or um just to give us a better feel for that situation?
So just to talk a little bit about the changes in law, cause you you raise that and that's an excellent point. And and it's it's interesting because what's happening in Blue Lake is actually happening countywide. I've had this conversation, I'm sure the sheriff has too. In the last couple of weeks with virtually every uh community member from every area that reaches out to me about this and and this is everyone's issue. Um in twenty eleven, we passed the voters passed Prop forty seven and that was the one that made petty theft go from a four hundred dollar. Or less to nine hundred and fifty dollar or less. So if it's if it's not over nine hundred and fifty dollars, it's not considered grand theft. It's not a felony. Part of the issue with that change also was that in the olden days before twenty eleven. If someone was a serial thief, after they had a couple, they could then be a felon. And and why that's significant is because there are so many more um consequences when someone's on felony probation. As far as they have mandatory supervision, they can be forced into drug treatment. They can be required if they violate to go to the jail and stay there. That really doesn't happen at the misdemeanor level. And then, as everyone knows, when COVID hit. The sheriff had to reduce the population at the jail inside even more curbed. Who would actually go to the jail? Uh so again, prior to COVID, when someone was on misdemeanor petty theft probation. And they violated by committing another theft, a judge could put them in jail for for two to three weeks, just to sort of try to adjust their behavior. That's gone. So what I've been seeing now is we have people who are on four and five grants. Of probation, misdemeanor probation for theft, who have violated five or six times, and I'm not exaggerating. We have entire. Buckets now of people and and the judge is telling them, you know, you have to stop this, but there's nothing that's happening. So one of the areas that we've been talking is um to have sort of the chronic offender. A rule and each city would be able to have one or two that they would designate and the sheriff would be able to have a couple that they were seeing. Um and that we would handle those very, very uniquely and that is that we would basically. Require them to stay at the jail. We can't do it for everyone because there isn't that capacity. But we all know of a handful of people who are simply the biggest problems in each community. And I've reached out to have a meeting with the judges. I've reached out to the public defender because obviously if the sheriff and I and the police chiefs agree to this, but the person gets arraigned in court. And a judge says, I'm granting you a release, it serves no purpose. Um so we wanna have the program understood by the judges and agreed upon so that when we say this is a chronic offender. Here's the last thirteen times they've been arrested. We're asking that they stay at the jail for six months, that the judge will do that. Uh so that's our biggest push right now because it really is ridiculous. Uh how much these individuals are getting away with. And I understand many stores now have just stopped calling. They don't call the police anymore because they feel like nothing's happening. Which is really um, you know, it's detrimental to to all of our people who own these stores. And it also affects us all very negatively. So we're we're trying to find sort of solutions around. The changes that the legislators and the voters have brought to us.
Is there any way that the city can provide any support to you, Maggie, and that um like writing letters or um reaching out to support that position?
You know, that is a really good point. I, cause what we're going to do to prove why these individuals should be, you know. The the chronic offender and stay is to really highlight all the number of cases, but absolutely. Um having communities support this, I think would go a long way.
I'd like to address that as well. I pre-question Manny 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 because it's a really huge issue, just like Maggie said, throughout the county and throughout the state of California. Uh public safety realignment, you know, puts uh our jail in a position where we can't handle all of the. Local misdemeanors and the local public nuisance cases. That's what a jail is supposed to be designed for. Is those cases that that like serial thieves, like chronic drunks. Uh the people that do batteries disturbances, it's those minor offenses. And it's the opportunity for those minor offenders to do a little jail time to have some accountability. Um is really, really key and some consequences. And oftentimes, we see this as an opportunity for people to get what they've been needing and that is get off of drugs. Get on the right foot again. So when they get out of custody, they can actually make good decisions. That's what a county jail is designed for. We have so many programs now that we can help people while they're in custody. The problem is, is that our jail is full of the serious and violent offenders that should be in state prison. So yes, you can do something. One thing you can do is call your state senator, call your assemblyman. Uh and and call your governor and say, public safety realignment isn't working. And it's not popular to say right now, but it's actually what is necessary is we do not need to be closing state prisons. They're they're actively closing state prisons, but still there's crime going on throughout the state. And I know it's a political promise, but in reality is they need to take on more of the serious and violent offenders. So our county jail can take on more of those uh those nuisance offenders. And uh and we need our judges as well to sentence people to jail. The chronic offenders need to be sentenced to jail. Our population right now in our county jail is at two sixty. Um and maximum right now is about three eighty because of COVID. It's we're rated at four hundred seventeen, but we have to have a quarantine. So there's plenty of people that can get sentenced to jail right now. And I have a sheriff's work alternative programs, people. That qualify for it, pay their debt to society by cleaning up trash on the side of the road, by cleaning vegetation, by working in a jail farm. Doing uh vegetation management around the city of uh McKinneyville um and that kind of stuff. So there's things that they can do for those people that. Qualify for it. But judges need to sentence people to jail. So. Letting them know, please sentence people to jail with official.
Thank you.
Jeffrey, your hands up?
Yeah. Hi, my name's Diane Caudillo. I'm a counselor at College of the Redwoods and um I'm really curious about. In the the last um topic that was raised um about. The mental health component of sentencing and when someone is held in jail. Like sure, I feel relieved when someone who's a danger to the public is in jail. Um but I'm wondering where, how much is uh. Added into that in terms of treatment? Cause so many people who are offending have serious trauma. Mental health issues and basic needs that are going unmet for sometimes decades, some are lifelong that way. And so is there, like, I I I'm trying to, I'm struggling to understand the nature of the relationship between police. Sent, you know, the judicial process sentencing and mental health and um other kinds of treatment. Because when people are held for six months in a stressful situation, having flipped their lid basically. Committed a crime, ended up in the situation, and then they're released after six months with no resources. What's, you know, do we, are there plans in place for like providing treatment while they're being held? Because that's an ideal time. I I know you mentioned Sheriff Hansel about treatment, I mean like getting clean off drugs, but. Are there other like treatments in terms of trauma treatment? Cause without that, a lot of people are gonna reoffend and reoffend and reoffend because their window of tolerance is tiny and they. They have no, you know, they can't regulate themselves.
So it's a great question. Um and as far as mental health goes. Uh we do, I mean, the county jail is probably the biggest mental health facility in our county right now. Uh we have probably seventy percent of our incarcerated uh inmates have some kind of mental health treatments. Um and so it's something that we are active in. So there are, I believe, three and a half clinicians plus a doctor. Uh that that has access to all of the inmates. And so that's what I'm talking about. We need to actually stabilize people and that's what this opportunity for jail does. Number one, they get some sober, okay? And then once they are sober, they can get as far as a program goes. They can get mental health treatment. We have county mental health um and we have our 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 medical writers in our in our custody that that are supposed to. That, that are supposed to work together in trying to help our inmates. And what they'll do as well is they'll set them up counseling in the same counseling, uh, in the same routine when they get out of custody. And so that's what we're trying to provide to the inmates, is to build up and give them what they need, so then they can become successful when they get out of custody. And so that is definitely a part of it. The scary thing about it here is that we have more incompetent stand trial inmates now than ever before. And so we can't prosecute these, these, um, these people that commit crimes because a judge has declared them incompetent. And so we actually have in our jail now, uh, we have partnered with the state hospitals. And so we have a, a jail-based competency treatment center in our facility now. We have six beds that are dedicated to this purpose, and we're expanding to eight because the need is great. Now, the state has to see, once someone's declared incompetent stand trial, they have like twenty-eight days to be able to see these inmates in order to basically get a plan for them, get a plan at the state hospital. The state hospital is backed up. And so sometimes it takes four to six months to get someone to the state hospitals of the severe cases. And so that's an issue. That's a problem. The state has to find a better way, because I agree with you. When someone doesn't have the um, are incompetent and they can't get restored for six months, that's a problem. That's a huge problem. But they, they, they still will see clinicians, they still will see a doctor, a psychiatrist, will try to get them stabilized on the medicines there. And there are times that we have to force people in custody, you know, on their meds, because it's what's best for them. And the judge has allowed us to do that, and it's all under uh, medical, you know, uh, uh, medical providers and our psychiatrists are, are doing all of that. And it's to help them, it's to do things that stabilize them, so they can actually get the treatment and, and what they need.
And for those who um, the, the mental illness issues is why they're committing crimes, we have mental health diversion programs. So this is aside from the people who are incompetent, because that really suspends the criminal proceedings, but for that other population. Um, there is mental health diversion and it provides really significant services, the goal ultimately being. If we can keep them, you know, on their meds, keep them through their therapy. Uh, the case ultimately will be dismissed, and then hopefully we've, we've helped them enough that we're not gonna see them back in the system. One other area that's really expanding, and I've been working for the last two years uh, with the tribes, is we have a number now of tribes that have tribal courts. They're setting up their own programs for tribal members, and it's really awesome. Uh, because they have a lot more wraparound services. I mean, they really are sort of providing housing and services and helping people. Find sobriety and, and address their, the, the mental health issues they might be trying to cope with. So um, we're seeing a lot of progress in this area, which is obviously much needed and, and something we should have been doing for a long time. It's just getting there and um, but the, the jail-based program, I've, I've toured it, it's really exceptional. And a lot of the men who were in the program at the time wanted to talk to me. It was kind of neat, cause normally I see them in court and there, they were in a little bit different setting and. Letting me know how well they were doing, and it was really very, very impressive. Good to see we have that.
All right, go ahead. What's your follow-up on Jeffrey and um?
Thank you, thank you. Um, I guess I, I'm wondering, would it? From the perspective of, perspective of the DA and Sheriff Hansel, would it be helpful if funding was allocated on the front end? So that um, Health and Human Services, Mental Health, you know, uh, you know, expediting training completion for therapists, qualified trauma therapists in the area. Like to create a more robust mental health support system to, for prevention. And then also in terms of housing, if we can get like infrastructure funds or whatever for building more housing and more like maybe housing with dedicated wraparound services. For people who are chronically unable to, you know, handle their stuff. Would those two interventions be a significant help in terms of policing and like the problems that are being discussed here in terms of like the difficulty in finding staff? Retaining people, um, keeping crime down?
Yes, all that stuff will help. I mean, right now what you're having is you're having deputies sheriffs respond to mental health calls all the time. It's not our job. We don't have the, but you will do it. We've been, and any support that we can give. And our, our, our psychiatric. Definitely some help. Um, and. Is the hospitals, the hospitals are overrun. Than that we. Do want cinema, actions, uh. Stand for Semper Vire, um, our stabilization unit, all things, they need, but it needs to happen. Uh, because uh, just, we, the. Need definitely.
And, and I'm not sure if the sheriff was done or not, but I did wanna tag on to that. One of the areas that we really try to work on this is we have a victim witness division in the DA's office. And they're social workers. And part of the funding uh, that happens with the state is, you know, there's fines and fees when someone's convicted of a crime. It goes into a fund to provide services and primarily therapy for, for, for those who have been victims of crime. We have always really worked with uh, at our child abuse unit to try to always have a mental health clinician available, not just, you know, for immediately after the child reports. Also to support the family, but then also to engage in the hopes that these children will then go on to seek the counseling that hopefully will help them. As they become, you know, as they become adults, not to have this sort of trauma cause them to, to have other issues. One area though specifically, we, we received grant funding for it. We had a hard time filling the position. It's just, it, it's really a significant problem here in Humboldt County. I've worked on um, the, the homeless issue with a large widespread number of people from the community. And that was always our number one issue, was not being able to hire and retain the mental health clinicians we needed to assist that population. And it's, it's really, basically, all the way down to Santa Rosa, there's a shortage. And then from there south, they're, they're doing much better being able to fill their positions.
I don't see any more hands. Is there anybody who'd like to speak? So is there, is there anything else you'd like to say in closing? You know, either two guests, I guess we can call it a wrap if there's no more questions.
I just encourage, this is, I, I really enjoy the town halls because of the communication and the dialogue, but I really encourage anyone, if you ever have any questions or concerns. Uh, to call my office. We can provide all sorts of information, it's public information. For example, once we file a case in court, we're, we're able to, you know, let you know what the charges are, what the next court date are. But also if you have issues or concerns, please, please call me and we can make an appointment. Because it really, you know, it's really, um, people in the community, a lot of times are seeing things before we're necessarily seeing them. Seeing the effects of the cases in the criminal courts and it's really helpful. I just appreciate the, the ability to talk with everyone. So thank you very much, and thank you for all participating tonight. Really wonderful turnout.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say thank you again for allowing us. Sorry that I've had internet issues tonight. Um, you know, it's typical of our county, right? Uh, anyway, uh. Um, you know, the, the homicides there, obviously unprecedented for Blue Lake. Um, it is, you know, disturbing all around. I just wanna let you all know that our detectives are taking this case very, very seriously, um, and they're actively investigating any leads that do come up. Uh, so please, you know, if you do have some piece of information, or if you hear something, no matter how small it is. You don't know how it can relate to the case and tie up a loose end for us. So please let us know, please let us know. Um, what you know, and um, and so we can, it can help close out this case. Um, Lieutenant Miller is our, our commander in the north area out of McKinleyville. Uh, he speaks to Mandy regularly, and so if you have any concerns as well, you can always go through Lieutenant Miller and, and Mandy and to try and, and get some of the public safety needs met there. Uh, we wanna meet the expectations, uh, the city of Blue Lake. So if we fall short in any area at all, please let us know. If there are concerns, please voice them to us. We can't fix it if we don't know about it. So a lot of times, sometimes you see something on social media and it kind of blows up a little bit. Why isn't this happening? Why is that happening? Well, I'm not on social media every day looking at all those things. So listen, please call us, please let us know. If there's, if there's something that goes wrong, you know, we can fix it. We can try and fix it. We can address it for the next time. So, so please let us know, please call us, and uh, and so we can be a part of the solution there, uh, and we can work things together.
Thank you, Sheriff. Did you see one hand? Uh, quickly, Jeffrey and Diane, one more time?
Okay, thank you. I'll try to be quick. I just wanna encourage all the members of this community to look out for your friends, our friends who live outdoors. Who are kind of in the most vulnerable position right now. You know, it's inconvenient for us to have things ripped off from us that we have to replace. But it's especially inconvenient to lose one's life. So if you know Haiku, if you know uh, Kenny McGahey, if you know people who live outdoors. Who have to go on the river bar to get home, who may not have the four walls to their benefit. You know, if you see Kenny and he's drunk, maybe offer to walk him home so he's safe. If you see somebody who looks scared, you know, if there's more people with them. If there's more people together that people can see, care about our people that live outside, safer they will be. Show some care for one another. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Thank you everybody for, for putting your input in, and, and thank you so much, Sheriff. And um, and Maggie, um, it's been great. I really, we really appreciate you coming and doing this for us. Um, and I would, I would like to make a motion to adjourn if there's no other people that would like to speak.
Second.
I need a commissioner to second that.
I'll second.
All right, who was that? Was that Stephanie?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you everybody for coming and um, have a great evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.